That's John Reese.
Welcome, everyone, to the Eugene City Council work session for May 9, 2011. Welcome to everyone here and at home. And we have first up this evening, a work session on Civic Stadium. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. And we have done some additional works into our last work session, but I think it might be best maybe if councilors Zelenka and Brown present their information first, and then we'd be happy to fill in some of the information that we've also found out, so.
Sure. Okay, Mayor. I'll say a few words, and then Councilor Brown say a few. We sent out a packet. I apologize for getting it probably three or four times, but it sure as heck didn't look like it's sent. So, but apparently it did. Or delayed it for a long, long time. The, this follows on the April 8 meeting that we had with you, April 13th, where we held a work session and presented the idea of reinventing Civic Stadium, and then held a public hearing on the 25th, where 38 people testified, the vast majority of which were in favor of Civic Stadium being renovated. And it's the last meeting before the 4J School Board takes this issue up. And what we've got in front of you is an AIS that Councilor Brown and I put together with the Save Civic Stadium folks, and it describes the options in front of you, which are to join with the Civic Stadium, you know, lease option, a purchase option, and a, and both presenting both of them to 4J or taking no action. And the opportunity here is really to create this community and family sports complex that included a professional soccer team, and to make this happen would involve the city participating with Save Civic and modifying their proposal to present to 4J. So it would be reinventing the, redoing the soccer field, the baseball field as a soccer field with a new scoreboard, and east grandstands, rehabilitating the upper portions of the old historic grandstands, but abandoning the underneath part because that's way too expensive to deal with. And then that would be Phase 1, sufficient to garner a professional soccer team, and then also to, in Phase 2, fieldhouse and restaurant, and potentially the Y as a first ride refusal and housing on a second ride refusal with their tennis courts. And we would do this through a public-private partnership with the, where we would delineate our responsibilities and Save Civic nonprofit would delineate theirs, but we'd all work towards redeveloping this project. The, this afternoon, I had a conversation with city attorney Glenn Klein informed me that the, the way that the bond measure was written for the park bonds, it doesn't look like the, they would be available, they would be available if we could to acquire the property as a park, but not if we wanted to be able to use it as a professional soccer team. So we have a revised motion with that information that I'll hand out, which basically takes the purchase off, off of the table and just has the lease option in it. Some little revised language, that's what's in your packet. So with that, we're just talking about the lease option, and Glenn can talk about that after I concluded about some of the more specifics about that. So when we talked about the financing plan before, we talked about the operating costs, the capital costs of developing it, and also the startup cost. The pro forma that we, that was developed shows that there's about $550,000 a year after all, all the costs are paid, which could pay for the operating costs and the lease payment to the school district of $170,000 escalated over time. And then the capital costs, we broke up into two phases, Phase 1 and Phase 2, and showed where those sources of capital would come from in the table on the third page. And, and then we talked about the startup cost and how that would be shared by the public-private partnership. But more specifically focusing in on what the council's, or the city's role would be. And the lease option, we would, with an option to buy that property eventually, would be to become the leasing of the property, or work with, Save Civic to be the leasing, and work with them to redevelop the property. And more specifically, we'd structure it as a two-year lease with an automatic long-term extension if certain fundraising and development milestones were met, and those would be negotiated with exactly they would be with the 4J School District if they chose us. And, and then, so that would, and the city would be guarantor for part of that lease payment, and, which we said was about $170,000 plus escalating at 3% a year. So the Save Civic folks had $70,000 that they had pledges for, and so our lease payment would be approximately $100,000 a year for those two years. And, so we would want to revise the Save Civic Stadium's proposal to 4J to incorporate the city's participation in it and that private-public partnership, and to revise the lease payment that they said and the structure of it, and also the financing plan as we described above. And then, and more fully describe the benefits of this community and family sports complex for, and the benefits associated or accruing to the community, the 4J School District, and the recreational purposes for which it would be held and used, and historic preservation, of course, are children. So I guess, and, and so the motion in front of you actually just relates to the lease and working with the Save Civic to revise their proposal. So I guess in the end, what this really sums up to is that we didn't really have all the time that we needed to be able to come up with a proposal that had all its I's dotted and all its T's crossed. Actually, I said that right. I usually say I's crossed and T's dotted, but, so we didn't have that much time to get as far as we wanted to, but we did get what I think is a pretty solid proposal. That has, that's very realistic, and I think has a very good chance of being successful and very cooperative for the city. Takes a little bit of bold action on the part of the city councilors to be able to move this forward. But when I've seen the council take bold action before, for instance, when the council decided to do the Holt Center, or when the council decided to do the, the new library, or when the council decided to do the airport, those are bold steps that took and really enhanced this community, and I think this is one of those opportunities. Because once this stadium is gone, and the property is used for a different purpose, it's gone, and it's not going to be used for that. So we have this opportunity to do this, this community and family sports complex idea with a professional soccer team. And so that's my remarks. George, you want to add?
Yeah, I'd like to add a few things that, you mentioned bold action, and, you know, the, the city took bold action in 1938, when we put out to ballot to, to purchase the property for the back taxes that were owed. That was, you know, at the tail end of the Depression, and unemployment was 25%, much higher than it is now. The community went, thought about it, and thought, yeah, we can do this. We're going to do this. And it was, they voted, and it was two to one to acquire the property. While all that was going on, people went around town collecting, you know, 50 cents here, 25 cents there, $10, $50, $100 from people in the community, and they raised approximately $5,000 or $6,000 to build the stadium itself. And on that same ballot, they voted to buy 160 acres on Spencer Butte, as the foundation for that park. So that was bold action, and look, and look at what we got for you at this, this wonderful park. That could all be apartments and totally developed now, how the citizens of the community decided not to take action, take bold action and acquire that property. And we have a chance to do that here with Civic Stadium. It's a, it's a historic asset. It's in the center of town. The repurposing proposal is wonderful because it'll preserve it as, as athletic recreational space, and it'll actually increase it because there'll be an all-weather fieldhouse. The only one, and it's right in the center of town. It's like easy for people to get to it from anywhere in the, in the city. Currently, the only existing facility like that's way over in Springfield and that is kind of expensive. It would be a better deal here at Civic. We've heard from, you know, Dave Smith at Kid Sports, and Jürgen Rüther-Berloff, the Eugene Metro Soccer, South Eugene coach, we've heard from all kinds of soccer people that there's a shortage of, of space for that sport. It could also be used for other field sports, too, like lacrosse. There'd be very few days out of the year that that facility would not be being used. It wouldn't just be the professional soccer team with maybe, you know, I don't know how long the season is, say 20 matches. It'd be used probably almost every day. So where do we get the $100,000? That's the $24 million question. I think that we could probably get it from community development block grants. The next allocation's going to be over $1 million. We could maybe take $100,000 from there. I know that if we give city staff the task, they, they are usually equal to it, and they can come up, they can find that money. It's really, if you think about it, $100,000 a year isn't really that much money. I believe that we could find it. It's actually, this is a business deal, too. I talked to Dave Logsdon, who's the spectator facilities manager for the city of Portland, in the mayor's economic development office, and they purchased their stadium in 1966 from the Multnomah Athletic Club. They recently did a $37, $37 million remodel. The team is paying for half of it, and the city's going to pay for half of it. They're going to sell bonds. They rent that out to Peregrine Sports, the owners of the Timbers, and they, this year they're going to get $1.4 million in rent and ticket taxes, and that goes up about $100,000 a year. So this would be a business deal for the city of Eugene. It would be structured that the city would get paid back, whatever we invest in it. That's how Portland did theirs, and we can do that here. So I just feel like we've lost so much that it'd just be a terrible mistake to do commercial and residential infill in this spot. It was never intended for that. It was always meant to be kept for recreation, for sports, and I think we can do it. I think it's time for some bold action here.
So I've got Mike and George Polling and Pat Barr in the queue. Before that, I wanted to, Glenn, did you have anything you wanted to add to the comments that Alan made?
No, I had some clarifications based on what Alan had sent out over the weekend, but in light of the new motion that he has, I'm happy to answer questions that you have, but nothing that I need to say.
And city manager, did you have any thoughts about the, the adequacy of some of the constraints in the, in the motion in terms of long-term response?
No, my, my concern all along has been just an open-ended financial commitment that the city enters into in whatever that looks like. And so that would, that would be my concern as we're moving forward. This particular motion, I just saw this a little bit earlier, feels like it doesn't have that open end. It says we commit $200,000 to the, to the project. So the policy on whether or not you want to pursue it, obviously, is the council question, but my concern has always been the financial arrangement around it.
Yes, Glenn?
One of the things that is, it's clear to me in the motion, but I just want to make sure I'm clear with Alan. The motion assumes that the city would be contributing the dollars and that Save Civic would actually be the less C.
Correct.
Okay. So that the city would not be on the lease, so the city's financial commitment then would be just what the council would approve.
And one more clarifying point, the, the reason it's structured a two-year after, the third year, once the team, professional soccer team gets in place, and we need those fundraising milestone goals, the pro forma that was sent out shows that there's, there is sufficient revenue to pay the operating costs, the maintenance costs, the team costs, and the debt service on the loans, and the lease payment to 4J. So the, from that pro forma, there wouldn't be an ongoing, there might be an ongoing actually benefit to the community from financially.
Thank you. So, Mike, you're next.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to be able to clarify a couple pieces of this, and since, usually I would ask staff this, but since this is your proposal, I'll ask you guys if that's all right. So if I'm understanding this, the city's going to kick in for a couple of years, the $100,000, and Save Civic is going to kick in the $70,000. Now, have they already raised that $140,000 from fundraising, or is that something they intend to be able to raise over the next two years?
What Save Civic did was get pledges for those $70,000 should they get the lease, and, and that's essentially the pledges they put into their original proposal to 4J. For those first two years.
Sorry. So I'm, in your phasing plan of Phase 1 and Phase 2 reconstruction of the area in order to make it usable for soccer, is that something you anticipate being done just within that two-year window? That the Phase 1 and Phase 2 would be complete in that timeframe?
No, Phase, it's probably unlikely that even Phase 1 would be completed within that timeframe. The two-year timeframe is a timeframe where we would do the, get the plan together, the financing together, and the, and the relationship solidified, and get all that stuff in place so that we could access that, and then do Phase 1, and Phase 2 would go down the road.
So we wouldn't be actually starting Phase 1 until that third year?
We'd start Phase 1 as fast as we could get there. Might be within that two-year timeframe.
But it would be dependent on the fundraising being successful first, right?
Correct.
Okay. So I have some concerns about that timing right there, and how long that will actually sit empty, and the reason is because 4J's already made it very clear that no one can actually use the property until, for liability reasons, until it's been rebuilt. So we've got it sitting in its current state and getting worse for the next two to three years, maybe more. That has, I, I see that as an attractive nuisance for kids and for other problems that, that concerns me a little bit. Another part of the pro forma, and maybe I didn't, I didn't see it as clearly as I should have, but in the operational pro forma, I didn't see player salaries, and I didn't see debt service on any of the, I did in this last piece, but not in the original, for any of the loans that would be a necessary part of the rebuilding and the team building. Also didn't see, as they would be a for-profit organization operating on a public space, would they be subject to property taxes at all?
They would be a nonprofit, and I'm not a tax attorney, so I'm not going to guess on, on that during your last question. The pro forma did not include debt service on the loans. That's why it was, it stopped short of there, and that's why that section in the financing plan of the EIS that we sent over the weekend had the $550,000 left over. That has ample amount to pay for the debt service plus the, the lease payment. And I'll look and find out about salaries for players.
Player salaries are included on the pro forma.
$150,000, I think it's.
Right. Do you have any idea from the school district at all if they're willing, what length of time they're willing to allow fundraising to take place? In other words, how long are they going to let that thing sit empty and be an attractive nuisance?
Yeah, my assumption is that the, we would start using it at the end of two years, and my guess is that either the other two proposals will have approximately the same amount of time before it gets fully utilized as well. So maybe not to the extent that we would, maybe it'll be earlier than that, but it's going to be, I think, approximately the same kind of timeframe before anybody else does anything to it. Thinking of all the things that have to occur in order for the two proposals to move forward in terms of the, the planning, the metro plan amendments, the appeals, and all the other things that need to occur, it's, in my mind, very unlikely that they'll get, break ground and do stuff to that property in that, in that two-year timeframe anyway. So I think it's a push from 4J's perspective, regardless of which of the three proposals, the property's still going to be sitting there for a while. It's not going to start to happen the day after they make a decision, that's for sure.
Did you have something you wanted to add?
Yeah, I just wanted to add, some of my research, I looked at public loan teams that own the team and the stadium, or maybe the city owns the stadium, but people of the city own the team, who pay the city rent. And one of the most interesting situations is in Memphis. The Memphis, they're, they have a AAA baseball team called the Redbirds. They're a farm team of the Cardinals. They're the only professional sports team in the United States that is a 501(c)(3), recognized as such by the IRS. They do tremendous work in the community of Memphis. They give, they give a ton back to the city. Their profits, of course, pay, you know, the salaries, and they're responsible for the stadium. I don't know if they pay any taxes to the city or not, but what they do do is they have two different programs. One is called RBI, and that is for at-risk kids. And they help over 1,000 kids a year in Memphis with life-building skills and getting on baseball teams. They also pay for all 30 middle school Memphis, the baseball and softball programs. They pay everything, the, the school board, the school district, and the city pay nothing. That team supports both of those programs, girls and boys. So I see that this could, something similar, it'd be on a smaller scale, not as big as Memphis, they own 30 middle schools, but I see something like that could happen here, that the nonprofit organization would give back to the city. You know, it's a catch-22. You can't apply for the, for funding, grants, and you can't ask people to really step up and write a $5,000 check, or a $10,000 check, or a $100,000 check unless you are in control of that property. So.
Mike has 50.
Oh, okay.
That's okay. I just wanted to hear a good answer to that. Another question, I'm having a hard time knowing how long Civic, Save Civic can maintain that 70 a year, and the money that we might match for two or more years, if, as you're saying, the phasing of the construction project takes maybe even out to three or four years before anything could be usable there. And I, again, I had it, at least it was my understanding, that the school district was pretty clear that they did not want to see any use of that facility until it was rebuilt. So do they have, what they have is pledges, then, for how many years for that 70?
Two.
Okay. I may have more questions here after other people talk, so you might put me down for a second round, Mayor. I'm running out of time.
I've got George Polling and Pat, and just before I call on them, something else to think about is, and I can't speak, of course, for the school district, but one of the things to consider is the property value is, is likely to go up in time as opposed to going down as we come out of recession, so. George Polling?
Well, in the motion, the proposed motion, they're talking about $100,000 a year for two years. We're going to have a discussion tomorrow and Wednesday, primarily focusing around the social services here in, in, in the city, and how much money can we come up with. Everybody knows that federal and state and county money for social services is going away, and they're expecting the city to kick in as much money as they can. So I'm not real thrilled about, you know, committing $100,000 for two years at this point, considering what we've got to look at in, in the upcoming budget. That's, that's a big concern for me. You know, this has been a known occasion for many years, and Alan saying that, you know, we just didn't have time to put it together. If people really were interested in, in turning this into something worthwhile, they should have started years ago when 4J first, first started talking about it. The bold steps that George and Alan brought up, if I, if I remember history correctly, those were all voter-approved bond measures to build the library and the Holt Center and the airport, weren't they? So I don't recall it as being a council decision. You know, the CB, the CDBG funds, I believe there's going to be like a 15% cut on those. So those funds are going to be hard to come by. You know, those have to be really worthwhile projects. I'm a little concerned, a little bit leery, because all these are estimates and assumptions and what-ifs, and even in, even in the public testimony, you know, when they were, I don't remember who the speaker was, but they were talking about the financing, it said, and I wrote it down, financing might look like this, and that was a quote, "Might look like this," and enlisted several opportunities of possible funding sources, but nothing definite. And, you know, it's interesting, once the city entered, entered this conversation, all of a sudden there's a pro soccer team, and now a development, I believe it's a development league football team interested? How much money are they kicking into this process? Are they going to help out financially? Or is it, are those teams even going to come to town? You know, this, this is not the Field of Dreams. If you build it, they will come. I don't think that's going to happen here. So I'm just a little concerned. I can't support this. This is not something we should have even gotten started, started in. This is 4J's decision to make. I think they had three very good proposals. You know, it'd be nice to see a decision made that would be a benefit to 4J, a financial benefit to 4J, that would actually increase our tax base. But again, that's not our decision. That's 4J's decision.
Pat, you're next.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, this is a very intriguing proposal. I do have a couple of questions, and I won't go quite as far as Councilor Polling in saying that I haven't, I've decided to not support this, but I do have some, some questions. For the city manager, $200,000, $100,000 a year, other than community development block grants, have you thought much about where $100,000 would come from? Now, that in light of the fact that the county just cut $30,000 a year for the Eagan Warming Center, for instance, and that's just one of many social services that have been reduced in town, that will all be clamoring for immediate human needs, so.
Of course, we've given some thought to this topic, not prepared to sort of propose any particular sources at this time. CDBG was proposed last year as part of the budget process. We listed a variety of places for dollars could be found, could look at a new revenue source as a potential, but not prepared at, right at this moment to actually, to suggest anything or recommend anything.
Okay. So if I may continue, regarding HSC and some of the issues, we've been talking about the budget for HSC, and the issue came up regarding, what was it, $300,000 for the COO's van that essentially is going to be taken out of the regular HSC budget for this year. And we're looking at such vast cuts across the board for essential human services that are keeping people out of shelter, and out of food, and out of medical services, and out of all kinds of relief help. So I'm, I'm really questioning how we would come up with $200,000 over the course of two years, and I'm really not interested in community development block grants being spent on this particular product, project, excuse me. The, it is 4J's decision, and they'll be talking about it next Monday, and they have a business decision to make themselves. So Mayor, I agree, the property value over the course of the next few years will go up significantly. Essentially, we're looking at what you might consider fire-sale dollar prices going for this, this point in time, and in two years, that will change. But that also adds to the cost of whoever is buying the stadium at the time. So, you know, it's not going to get any less expensive to buy, so the financial plan is going to become more and more difficult to project, more and more difficult to meet as the cost of the stadium does go up. I do have that concern. And also, Councilor Brown makes a point that people don't want to put money down if you don't have the property in place, and we understand that Phase 1 is, regarding the improvement, is based upon fundraising being accomplished, and, and Save Civic has received pledges for the $70,000 for the lease. I guess my questions are, to tag along with Councilor Brown, if we don't have the property in place, how are people going to be enticed to give the money? That's a rhetorical question. So I do have fairly significant questions as we move forward with this discussion. I'm interested to hear what other people have to say.
Andrew?
Thank you, Mayor. So I'm just, I'm kind of out in left field with this. I'm on the baseline. I'm way out here, because I am pretty challenged by this conversation. You know, from the beginning, you know, we asked the 4J School Board to accept, to hold it, you know, hold the decision for us, please, and they said, okay, fine, thank you. So my question, not only where are we going to get the money, because I won't support it if it's coming out of CDBG money, because that's what we get a lot of our monies for different things in the community, like low-income housing. What's Plan B? If we, you do get the $200,000 somewhere from under a rock, and then there's If we, you do get the $200,000 somewhere from under a rock, and then there's no, you know, what happens if the plan doesn't come to fruition? That would be my question. What's Plan B?
Oh, the way that we would structure this is there'd be a two-year lease, and if we didn't make those fundraising and, and development milestones to get the property going in that two-year period, then it would revert back to 4J, so you would be out, 4J would have the property back. So, it protects both the, the school district and the city from a long-term decision that would be irrevocable.
So, so, John, can I just ask you, do you think that this motion protects, is strong enough language, it protects the city from ongoing financial commitments outside of the $200,000?
How I read the motion, and so maybe just to clarify, I read the motion that the city's obligation is for $200,000 over a two-year period, and that would assist lease payments for a lease to 4J, that any additional dollars committed by the city would have to be approved and appropriated by the, approved by the city council that's above and beyond the $200,000. That's how I read this particular motion, so, maybe if that's clarification.
Well, I really appreciate the work you guys have done on this. I think you've given it CPR, and it's been intubated, and it's, you know, it's on live support, but, you know, I just kind of, I don't know, Alan and George, you know, I just really don't know. I, I'm really kind of concerned about us finding $200,000. I kind of was a little bit more lukewarm about it when, you know, we were talking about parked bonds, but apparently we can't use that to rent, we have to use it to buy, and we're not buying. So, that kind of puts it in a different ball field, really. So, that's really all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Got three sports metaphors. Three minutes.
Well, I am from Southern California.
Not in four medical ones.
Can we have a two-minute one?
Too challenging. That's a bad one.
Thanks.
She's put the gauntlet up there.
Really? Yeah, really, that's okay, I can...
I'm getting better to say, that's all.
But, this is really a hard one, because I appreciate all the work that everybody's put in on it, and it really is an intriguing proposal. I've heard it from the folks who originally came up with it, I know you've done a lot of work on it. I've been knocking around Civic Stadium since I was on the school board, you know, 15 years ago, so this is an, an area that I'm, that I'm familiar with. And it's not the only proposal for this site, and I think there's been a lot of work done on this one, but we also have to consider there's other uses, and there's also other opportunities that the school district has. They have to make a business decision, as, as Pat said, and, and I think they have to look at it in terms of what's possible, what's reasonable, what's practical, and what could actually happen. I think there's a couple of proposals that actually have legs, they could actually happen, you know, they're, the, the opportunity's in place. And one of those, I think, is a great option personally, I think it's a really nice proposal, and I think it's, it's something that's worth taking a look at, especially the fact that it's all put together, at least my understanding is that it's put together. Do I want the city to commit the money? If we really had the will to do it, we could do it, but what I'm sensing, what I'm hearing and I'm feeling within myself is, if I wanted to put money into it, it would be kind of like, is this really what I want to use my money for? Is this really what I want to do when there's so many other things involved here? And, and it's a possibility, it might work, and it's a great idea. You guys have done a lot of work on it, and there's been a lot of things that have been explored, and people who have said, "Yeah, I think I might do this, and this would be good, and we could bring this," and it kind of reminds me of conversations we had earlier about hockey team, when we built an ice rink. And that was a great conversation at that time, too. I think at this point, with the, with the greatest respect for the work that's been done, I think my sense would be to say, "I'm just not comfortable investing in this one at this time." And part of that is because of the money, but another part of it is because I don't necessarily think this would be the option that I would be most supportive of, were I still on the school board. I might look at another option and consider it to be a better option.
Eddie?
First, I want to make a correction, the library was not built with a bond issue. I don't know about the other two things, but this is...
I don't know why it was, we had to call...
This is not something we can think, "Well, we won't do it this year, we'll do it in a couple of years." We're talking about saving a historical structure, which is a rare, a rare structure from what all I've heard, it's not something that exists everywhere. It's a part of the history of our community, we've destroyed so much of it, somebody has, and it's something that's really important to a lot of people, and if we, I, I would hope the school board would be trying to save it, but if they aren't, and we are the only ones who can do something at this point, I think we should make every effort that we can. I think we should be as daring as, well, we're not being as daring as those people were in 1938, but I think that we should see that we don't destroy what they built at that time, if we have the, if we have the power to stop the destruction. And I think we do have the power, I think Alan and George have done remarkable job of coming up with a plan, along with some, with the help of some other people, and it's not just, it's not just talking about, it would be nice, they have done a lot of work that shows that we, it could happen. I think there would be no better use for CDBG funds, personally. I think this would be, they're supposed, those funds are supposed to help people who are underprivileged. This would help lots of kids for now and in the future, and I think that's, also, it's a great example for the young people, of people trying to respect history and save something that's important to people. Thank you.
A lot of strongly-held views on this that we've discussed a few times, and this and the other proposals that are, went forward, other RFPs. My only comment about this one, just for you to consider as you wrestle with this, is I think your, your concerns and worries about the social service issues are good ones, but I also think the other part of that is, how do you build capital into the community so that we can move into a better place? And so, with this, you can, you have to sort of think about both those ends of the, of the spectrum, both what the concerns you have for how we spend our money, but also how we try to grow more and, and have more investment in our community, and this has some of both of those things, so, just something for you to kind of balance in your, in your heads as you think about this. Alan, do you have, did you want to say something, and then George, you can just put a motion on the, George Pauling?
I have around two.
Oh, I, well, you can have your, your mic, sir.
Yeah, a couple of comments. One, I think the other proposals are fairly solid as well, and they all have parts of it that I like, parts I don't like. The, the, in support of the Save Civic Stadium folks, they've actually been working on this for a long, long time. It's not something that just came up. The proposal that was put forth by them to 4J was worked on for a really long time, is an excellent proposal, and, and my hat's off to all those people that, that did that work. And, and the vast majority of that work was done previously to this. So, it wasn't a proposal that would just come, came together at the last minute, it's a proposal, what came together at the last minute was the city's participation in it, and we didn't have that much time to put together all of that portion of it. The rest of it, I think, is very solid and well-done. So, my hat's off to all the Save Civic people. If you're a Save Civic Stadium person, just raise your hand, I just wanted to acknowledge you and say thank you.
We've been trying to knock out that, the dumb-bod counselors around the table.
Broke that.
Scored half time.
You know, and, and I care deeply about human services, too, so, and the human services dollars being spent in this community are woefully inadequate. I was the chair for many years, and on the Human Services Commission for nine years, so, I look at this as a human services program in ways, a, a large part of it is directed towards youth and, and kids, and having, and young adults, and having those programs be there, I think, is very important, especially the fieldhouse and the implementation, potentially the Y being there, and also the, the, the fieldhouse with kid sports. I think $100,000 is a modest amount. The recommendation, to be clear, is that the city manager will come back with a recommendation of how to fund that, and we can have a conversation about it. Two other points that I wanted to make were that we have a letter of support from, from John Jaquah, who is a local community leader, who wanted to express his support for this idea, and, and I think that's, should be noted, he sent that to the mayor, and I think his son, Nate Jaquah, is actually a professional soccer player in the Seattle Sounders, and is hugely supportive of this idea as well. Finally, George and I, along with some of the Save Civic people, had an opportunity to go up to Portland and see the Portland Timbers play on Friday in the rain. Having said that, it's truly an, by the way, we paid for our tickets. It is truly an amazing facility, what they did in converting the old PG Park into a soccer facility by building a new East Grandstands, as it turns out. It's really beautifully done. There were 20,000 crazy fans there, including the Timbers Army, which is about 3,000 people strong, they stood the entire game and cheered, they had banners, they're organized, they had cheers. It was really a European-style soccer event, and the, the thing that was most amazing to me about it was the, was the buzz around it. It's really captured the imagination, the heart of the city of Portland, especially since the Blazers weren't doing so hot. And, and it really is about community, it really, they're the hottest thing in Portland, is the Timbers. And they're also four and three, so that's four, three and one, so that's good, too. And by the way, they won, one to nothing.
Seventy seconds, Mayor.
Okay, so we, I've got Mike, and George Brown, and Andrea. Mike?
Thank you. I appreciate what's been said around the table here on this, it's obviously important to a lot of people. I agree with a lot of what several of you said, but with Chris's specifically, there are, there are many good proposals here. There are benefits to some of the others, and I'm happy that it's not our decision to decide between the three. The interesting thing that I believe is the case is that the school district also doesn't have to choose between the three. My understanding is they have the capacity to choose none of the above and to look for another option. Subsequently, I, I don't know that they'll do that, but they, I do believe they have that option, which means this decision right now isn't ours to decide, we're either gonna put this money in, or we're not gonna be able to save Civic, that's really not the nature of this decision right now. The decision is, should we spend the, and commit the $100,000 a year for this purpose to help this particular proposal? Now, I have some questions about all the pieces of this proposal, and whether it's fully formed, and whether that money would be well-spent. It's kind of a want-versus-need decision for me, and there are a lot of other needs that cry out right now. I think in our last week's packet, we got a, a letter from a group of neighbors on Skyline, I think, with all the pictures of their road that have, you know, 40, 50 of the neighbors signed on to the thing, saying, you know, "Look at this, it's embarrassing, our road's falling apart, and what are you gonna do?" And I, I think we'd have to be telling them, "Well, we'd, we'd rather spend it on the chance to help with this proposal than to fix your road," or to do some of the other things that I think are more our job, like maintaining some of the parks that we already have, and we don't have a clear financial plan for how to do. So, it's not that it's a, a bad cause, it's not that it's a bad idea, it's that, from my opinion, from my perspective, our job is to balance the wants versus the needs and apply how much money we actually have to spend, and I, I don't think this is the wisest choice for the money at the moment. Thank you.
George Brown?
Well, I'd just like to say, yes, you're tracking, Mike, it is 4J's decision, they have the final decision. This, and there's no, if we do this, there's no telling that they would pick this, that they would pick Save Civic. It just gives Save Civic a better chance. You know, it is for you, it is for people with low income, will get jobs here, but it's for kids all over the city. I wouldn't be surprised if some of the Springfield people used the facility, too, 'cause they only have the one indoor, all-year-round arena. So, I, you know, I think it qualifies for CDBG funds, and really, in the grand scheme of things, I mean, $100,000 for two years, it's, I'm pretty sure we can do that. I think if the staff looks hard enough, they can fund it, and we're not seriously compromising, seriously compromising any other program. The point is, I mean, once it's gone, it's gone, and we've, we've already seen that with so much of our downtown, and we, we have a chance to save this piece of our history. And we, you know, we didn't do it before, for the over 100 buildings that were torn down downtown, and many of them architectural gems that never should have been destroyed. This stadium is, is almost unique, there's very few like it in the whole country. It's in the center of town, it would just be a fabulous sports and recreation resource. To, to not even try to save it is, is really sad, it just kind of continues the, kind of a throwaway mentality, it's like, "Oh, well, it's old, let's just get rid of it." I, I think that would be a terrible mistake. And, yes, I went to the Timbers match on Friday night, and it was fabulous, I mean, I wish, I know it was short notice, I wish more counselors could have gone, because it was just fabulous. Timbers Army, we parked a few blocks away, you could hear them three blocks away, they sang, they were there for an hour before, 3,000 people in a block, the stadium was empty, the Army was there waving like over 100 banners, there's 3,000 of them, singing the whole time. They sang for the whole first half, 45 minutes, they took a 15-minute break, probably to soothe their sore throats, and they sang the whole second half. And then as everyone, the rest of the crowd was filing out after the victory, they were still there, singing. It was just fabulous, really a sense of community there, the whole town has embraced them. They're in a densely-developed area in Deuce Hollow, there's tall apartment buildings around and commercial buildings. There was probably some kind of pressure to say, "Look, let's just tear this down and develop this." But Portland didn't do that. They bought it, they saved it, they remodeled it, and they're making money off of it, and we could, we could do that.
I've got Andrea and then Pat in the queue, and I'd just like to say that I think if we decided to spend $100,000 for two years, I think we take that as a serious commitment, 'cause we don't have that much money to be doing anything with, so whatever decision we make is a serious commitment. I think the issue before us tonight is this, the right serious commitment, and, and I think you can look at it, as I said earlier, from several perspectives, but I think there's no doubt that you can make a case for what it could do economically, and what it could do socially, and what it could do in terms of preserving our history. So, it has all of those elements, whether you think it has enough of those, that you want to vote for it, that's certainly a council decision, but it does have all of those pieces, and it would be a serious commitment on the part of the community to think that you could take something and make something good for the community out of it, and something that would serve our children, and serve our community, and serve our economy, and, and preserve part of our history. So, that is the decision before you tonight, it might not be the right time for some people, or they may not agree, but it, it certainly is a serious question, and one that has implications in all of these levels that I've talked about. Andrea, and then Pat.
So, John, tell me, how easy is it gonna be to come up with $100,000? On a scale of one to 10, what number would you pick?
Compared to a million?
Compared to a million? It's the opportunity. Sorry.
It won't be an easy piece, I'm not sure where to put that on the, on the scale. I mean, obviously, if council wanted, went in this direction, we'd come back with what we hope would be viable options, but they won't be easy options, as we've talked about with the last couple of years. We really have done a lot to try to shrink our footprint and really be pretty responsible stewards. We're, we're kind of at that place, where there just isn't a lot of other dollars. You'd be trading off something, what would that be? I don't know, and that's part of what we would come back. I just don't, I don't know what that would be.
I mean, 'cause I personally am, am challenged by this, and I'm trying to find something to hang my hat on it, to be a positive, for this to be positive. I hear that this is a community asset, I mean, I don't disagree with it, everything that, that is being said on the positive is very true, but my challenge is, is the money. You know, I know that the city manager and the assistant city manager have been working really hard to try and pare things down as, as much to the core as possible, and trying to keep providing services for our community, and, you know, for him to come up with $100,000 per year for this, I think it's very admirable, but then I think, "Well, wait a minute, if I got $100,000, where would I put it?" And it definitely wouldn't be towards this. You know, there's a lot of things in my community that I need, I need toilets for my homeless people in the Whittaker, you know, I need places for homeless people to camp, and if you're gonna pare that down, if you're gonna find money for my community, that's what I want you to be doing with it, not to say that this isn't a value. Not to say that this isn't a value. I think this is a great, I think it'd be great if we could do this in less leaner times. I would be, of course, and I know I've gotten some emails from people that are very committed to doing the fundraising and working on it. I think it would work, but what I'm being asked right here at this table is to approve $100,000, for John to find $100,000 to go forth on this. And I'm really challenged by that. I truly am. I just think that, you know, there's a lot, there's, you know, we all know how the state of the economy is, and I don't need to go into that. I think that, I just think this is really sad that this has come to us at this time because I can't support it.
Pat and then Betty.
You know, I wish we had time to say, "Manager Reeves, go out and find the $100,000, tell us how you're going to do it." We don't have time, we have to make a decision tonight. You know, there's no more time to drag our heels on this one. And I agree with the mayor that economic stability is the best way to fund social services. We may disagree that sustainable harvest of forest lands may be the best way yet, but really, economic stability is the best way to fund social services. Unfortunately, we don't have that in Eugene. We have very difficult economic times that lag behind Oregon, which in itself lags behind the nation. So we don't have economic stability, and I'm not sure that a soccer team coming to town would provide such. But this is very critical to me. This question is very critical to my vote. It's been suggested that the $200,000 will be paid back to the city. What's the timeframe on paying it back and how is it going to be paid back? And are we guaranteed a payback of the $200,000?
There is nothing in the motion about paying it back. And given that this would be with a not-for-profit corporation, unless the individual board members of that corporation were willing to personally guarantee and put up assets to pay the city back, I would not advise you to assume that you are going to get paid back, even if we had it in a contract. Because a not-for-profit, and the contract would be with the not-for-profit, and it only has the assets that it has, and at the moment, it has pledges, I understand, of $70,000, but that would be going toward the lease payment.
Not toward the $100,000, that'd be the additional.
Right, so would you get paid back? That's not part of the motion.
Okay, that puts a big question mark on it for me, as far as me telling the people of Eugene that this is the best way to spend $200,000. If somebody could say, as has been implied, that we would get the $200,000 back, it'd be a little bit easier for me. But, you know, toilets in Whittaker, that's a big issue. And as far as it being the center of Eugene, I think people out on Irwin Street probably have a different opinion on where the syndrome of Eugene is. So thank you for the frankness on the repayment. That helps move my decision.
Betty?
Thank you. And shall I make the motion? First, I want to, I just want to say that the mayor said this would be a serious commitment, a commitment we would take seriously if we made it. I also think it's serious negligence if we don't do what we could possibly do to save this historic structure. I think if we do it 70 years from now, it's been about 70 years since they built it, people would be proud of us for having saved it, and they will certainly condemn us for letting it go. But the motion is, I move that the city council commit $100,000 per year for two years to assist Save Civic Stadium with lease payments to 4J. And should SCS get the lease from 4J, to direct the city manager to work with SCS during the two-year term to, colon, "Develop a financing plan, a revised proposal for the redevelopment of the Civic Stadium property, and to make recommendation on how to fund the $100,000 for two years."
Second?
Richard, second.
I hope you'll support this, but I also wanted to thank all of you for a little bit of indulgence for me and councillor Brown, pulling this in front of you. I know I kind of put you a little bit on the spot, but that's why I get paid the big bucks. And I want to thank staff for their efforts on this as well and the analysis that they've done in making our proposal a little bit better. However it goes, everybody had really good points that they made. The next budget that we have is going to be this in spades. It's going to be trade-off after trade-off after trade-off. So I personally think this is a good way to spend this money. I think it is a community-building thing, I think it is a human services thing, I think it's an economic development and jobs project, so, and it's also historic preservation. I think all those things grouped into one little project is quite amazing. So that's what captured my attention. That and having this professional soccer team here really captured my imagination, so.
Thank you, mayor. And my imagination is captured also. You know, I've done a little bit of accounting here, and while I'm not a mathematician, it's fairly simple arithmetic here where the voting lies. And so I need one more clarification. If we were to approve this tonight, if we were to approve this tonight, it then goes before the 4J board to make a decision. This does not seal that $200,000 is going to be spent. It gives the 4J one more option in their decision next Monday. I'm correct in that. So we're not committing $200,000, we're committing a...
We're pledging $200,000.
For...
You are pledging $200,000.
I mean, really, I kind of...
You would be, you are not legally committing, you are not spending the money tonight, but if 4J accepts the SCS proposal based on the action that you take tonight, I expect that the 4J board would not view it politely if you changed your mind before you signed the contract. So you are at least politically committing the $200,000 if you vote tonight.
So that would give 4J four options, basically, to look at next Monday. One of them would be the Civic Stadium with this revision attached to it. The other would be the Fred Meyer, the YMCA, and the fourth is...
None of the above.
None of the above. None of the above would involve waiting for Civic Stadium to settle down and perhaps become more of a valuable property, somebody to have maybe a more solid bid.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
George, polling.
What I foresee is some wrangling for some small amounts of money in our budget committee discussions. If you were to come back with a proposal of taking $100,000 from X-Pot, and we, the council, couldn't agree upon that, then what happens? In other words, we say, "Well, we don't..." Say, "We take $100,000 from the cahoots program," and the council says, "No, we don't want to do that." You come back with another proposal. You get whatever it is. If we can't decide where that money's going to come from, what's going to happen to this? Are we going to still be committed for that money if 4J decides to go with this? So we can spend the rest of the year deciding where that $100,000 is going to come from?
I hope not at meetings I'm at. But he would have to find the money.
I'm just concerned that maybe we're putting a cart before the horse on this. Maybe we should have figured out where the money was going to come from first.
Okay, seeing no one else in the queue, all those in favor, please indicate. 1, 2, 3, and opposition. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, it does not pass. Thank you, everybody. On to the next item on our agenda.
Gives you a little rash.
This has nothing to do with...
Not yet. Gives me palpitations.
Question yourself. It's a level of...
No, I don't.
But it does give you a little rash. Gives her a little rash.
You just take it issue by issue.
I do.
Another idea, though.
Next item is animal code.
You're asking for no money.
I got none, writing.
The manager.
I'll just turn over to Kelly to lead in our discussion.
Everybody breathe.
Right.
Thanks, mayor and council. The Accessibility Committee of the Human Rights Commission has requested that the council consider changes in the Eugene City Code to address impacts to service animals and their human owners when those service animals are harmed. The Accessibility Committee started this work after a local incident occurred, and after that, another incident occurred in which a service animal was attacked. And so they have some concerns that our code doesn't provide adequate sanctions for those incidents. Mary Otten, formerly of the Human Rights Commission and a current member of the Accessibility Committee, is here and, if needed, can offer additional perspective or answer questions you may have. And I'll provide a brief overview. Your packet includes draft code language, and I want to emphasize that it's draft language. It's conceptual, and changes can certainly be made if you choose to put this forward for a public hearing. For instance, we show a newly added definition of a service animal. We don't currently define that in city code. And in talking with Lynn County, we would probably want to revise that definition further to also define what a service animal is not. What we're suggesting is consistent with the Federal Americans with Disabilities Act, but defining what a service animal is not probably would help clarify because you can get into some interesting territory when you're not complete. Service animals are animals that are individually trained to perform tasks for people with disabilities, such as guiding people who are blind, alerting people who are deaf, pulling wheelchairs, alerting and protecting a person who's having a seizure, performing other special tasks. And service animals, it's important to emphasize that they are working animals, they're not pets. While there may be a strong emotional connection, they are working animals. And that's why this is such a critical issue for members of the Accessibility Committee and for others in the community. Oh, okay. All righty. When a service animal is harmed by another person or by another animal, the impacts for that service animal and for the animal's owner can be huge. Because a service animal essentially is an extension of a person, the Accessibility Committee considers this a human rights issue. So just a few more things I wanted to share, and they're also in your agenda item summary. Some ways in which the city code could be changed to provide more meaningful sanctions include expanding the definition of first-degree animal abuse to include a person's physical injury to a service animal. Right now, that's second-degree abuse, and by changing it to first degree, it would be a greater sanction. There also could be a change to require that owners notify the Lynn County Health Officer for animals biting not only humans but service animals. That currently isn't the case. And there also could be additional sanctions and violations for potentially dangerous dogs that cause harm to service animals. Wanted to also forecast that in reviewing Animal Services, a project that's underway since the last budget, we have had preliminary discussions with Lynn County Animal Services about looking at the animal codes for the cities of Eugene and Springfield and Lynn County down the road. So this would be, if you chose to look at this issue and perhaps call for a public hearing, this would be sort of a first phase in looking at the animal code, and there could be additional changes in the animal code proposed down the road as we look for more consistency among the jurisdictions. We did share these concepts with municipal court Judge Wayne Allen, as well as with staff from Lynn County Animal Services.
And their response was...
They are generally supportive.
Mm-hmm.
So we would probably recommend a few tweaks in the code language to be more consistent with Lynn County's practices around licensing dogs. And that has to do with the definition of a service animal, defining what it is not. Because right now, they don't charge a license fee for those animals.
So excuse me if you said this already, but did you, who was part of the group that worked on these proposals?
This started with the Accessibility Committee, which is a code-established committee of the Human Rights Commission. They started the work, and then several different staff worked with them, and we reviewed it with Lynn County and...
That's what I wanted to kind of...
Right.
Thank you. George, polling.
I'm glad to see this coming forward. I personally would like to see it even moved up to higher degree crime, if we could. Throughout my career in law enforcement and my current other career, I've seen many different types of service animals being used for different purposes. My concern is that I didn't see anything unless I missed it. There's nothing in there that's requiring that the dog be identified by, most of them that I have seen have vests or something designating them as a service animal. I have seen some without those. So if we're talking about two dogs getting in a fight, the person with the dangerous dog should have some kind of indication that a service animal is approaching them because they are a different breed. A service animal is, like you said, the extension of the person that has that dog. So are we, have we entered into any discussion as far as requiring identifying vests and/or documentation on files somewhere that this specific animal is registered with the city as a service animal?
We haven't had that discussion. It's a good issue to bring up. What we have suggested is a definition of service animal that's consistent with the Federal Americans with Disabilities Act, and that doesn't require that kind of identification. So we would want to be cautious about adding that to the definition, but we could certainly look to see if there are other ways to get at that. We had a discussion last week, staff, Mary Otten as well, in response to some of the feedback we got from Lynn County. It was Ms. Otten's belief that it would be extremely rare for a service animal not to be identifiable, but we can certainly take a look to see if there are additional ways to get at that.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mike?
Thank you, mayor. Excuse me. With my two years I got to spend on the Human Rights Commission, I had the chance to work with Mary, and it was a privilege. And I know her to be diligent and wise and well-informed on things like this, so when I hear her advocating this, I absolutely want to support it and move it forward, and I think it's a sound idea.
Okay, Andrea.
Thank you, mayor. So help me understand about the process one goes through to have their animal identified as a service dog. Can anybody just say this is a service dog? Is there, or is there a certain licensing or training or... There is training, there isn't a license, and I might want to ask Mary to add additional information to what I'm going to say. But in using and relying upon the definition through the federal ADA for service animal, it's pretty clear that people can't just label their, any pet, a service animal for any purpose that they deem appropriate in providing service. And so the federal definition is very clear. It has to be individually trained. The training is pretty extensive. We wouldn't prescribe what that training is, but the training is extensive, and it has to be a dog that is trained to perform certain kinds of duties, so it can't be any kind of animal. The ADA...
Miniature horse.
Or, I was going to say, the ADA recently made a change, and in certain instances, miniature horse, but it's a pretty prescribed sort of definition. So I don't know if that helps. Would it be helpful to hear a little bit more about the, what kind of training is required? Chair's right in front of you.
Train is the chair right in front of you.
I'm here, it's Andrea.
Yeah, the definition on the training aspect of service animals, of course, it's depending on the task that's required, and I'm not familiar with all the training of all the different kinds of service animals. For instance, the seizure-alert dogs, I really don't know too much about that. However, they are all trained, and there are, by just train, I don't mean to just train to do the task, but the owners are also trained. So you learn how to handle a dog, and there's obedience aspects. That isn't to say that some people don't go home and do whatever, that, you know, bad things and whatever, but the difference between the service animal with the training and the owner getting the training and somebody who gets a prescription from, say, a doctor to have a companion animal, is that you just go pick up whatever animal you want, and then that animal is your sort of comfort animal or whatever, but there's no training. And that's, or there could be, but there isn't any required. And that's why there's this definitional difference between the task, you have to be trained, or the companion animals, which are not trained and do not fall under the ADA definition.
Okay.
Thank you. If that helps. And there is no certifying body or like central place where you go to, you know, like register your...
So this is just a scenario that I encountered. This, I was interviewing a woman from one of my programs, and she brought a pit bull into the department and said it was her service dog. And it was hard for, I mean, the dog was not well-trained, it was kind of like, and so, you know, I'm not sure where the PC level is to say to her, "That dog is not a service dog." I mean, it just wasn't trained, but, you know, so what would laypeople do under those situations? I mean, I think that's the kind of thing that I think would be helpful.
You're entitled to ask what task the dog is trained to do.
Okay.
And also, if the dog is badly behaved, I don't care if it's my guide dog with a harness on and big fat letters saying it's the guide dog, it's badly behaved, you can have every right to ask me to leave and take that dog out and leave that dog outside because service animals have... out and leave that dog outside because service animals have to behave in certain ways that are appropriate for the venue. If they don't, you absolutely have the right to ask people to leave. And they can only come back with the dog after it's well-behaved, or they can come back without the dog.
Okay. That's good to know.
You will get pushed back, and please just push right back because it's really important.
Thank you, Mary.
I want you to stay here at the table while we're.
Stay there, Mayor. I have a question for you.
Yeah. Well, Alan, you're next.
Oh. So, Mary, this is Councilor Alan Zelenka. You described tasks, and it also says any dog, so it's just a dog. So, like, what kind of tasks?
Well, of course, you're probably familiar with guide dogs.
Yeah.
That's the most commonly seen ones in public, I think. There are, and that's why I say it's pretty easy to identify, because the service animals in public, which is what we're, this is talking about, are with their owners because they're doing a task for their owner. They're, say, guiding a blind person, or they're helping a person with balance who has MS and walks, and sometimes, you know, use the service animal for that. Or they're pulling somebody with a wheelchair. Or they're with people who have issues, and the dogs will, like, grab stuff for the person who's maybe a quadriplegic, say, they go into a store. Or there are dogs who do seizure alert, so they're with a person who may be subject to certain kinds of seizures, and the dogs, I don't know how they do this, but they can know before the seizure happens that the person is going to have a seizure, and they alert the person to that. And I'm least familiar with that aspect. There are also dogs who are trained to alert deaf people to sounds that they can't hear. And I don't know how common those dogs would be out in public because the aspects I've heard from them is mostly stuff around the house. But in any case, they're still with a person. They wouldn't be by themselves, or they shouldn't be. For one thing, we have leash loss. So, that's why I say that I don't think it would be hard to identify the service animal because they're with a person. Now, you might not identify them as you're coming towards the street, on the street, you know, unless they have a harness or something. But they would be with a person, and the person would certainly be able to tell you that, "Hey, that's my guide dog," whatever dog.
The other question I have for you, Mary, is that I understand that there is an extensive amount of training for guide dogs and other kind of service dogs. And I know that's kind of, that's expensive. And I fully understand and agree that these dogs and it being an extension of the individual. But, and so, they're very special animals, and they're also expensive animals. What's the cost to train and acquire a guide dog?
Well, for guide dogs, the last number I saw, and it wasn't real recent, I mean, it's been the last couple of years, from beginning to end, including the training of the dog and the training of the person with the dog, and the preparation of this, you know, it's a months-long thing by the time you've trained the dog, and then the person goes, it's like 50 grand.
50 grand?
Yes, sir. Now, that's the whole inclusive process from beginning to end. And I don't mean that the person pays 50 grand. I mean.
Yeah, right.
The cost, if you take into consideration the staff, you know, they get paid to train the dogs, the staff in the kennels, where the dogs are, the, you know, all the, the whole ball of wax involved in training a guide dog specifically. And then the training for the person is around 50 grand. Now, other dogs I can't speak to because I'm not as familiar with the process and the costs, but I'm sure it's, the more extensive the training and the more extensive the training of the owner, the higher the cost. And also, they're bred, you know, they have breeding programs, and they don't just go to the pound and get any dog to be a guide dog.
Right.
Because they have to have, like, certain characteristics.
Well, the reason I ask that is on the last page of the ordinance modifications, it talks about, under subsection three there, it talks about paying restitution. And these dogs can be extremely expensive investments for folks, so.
Well, the 50 grand is not what somebody would have to pay.
I know, but if you were, I mean, it bears on the restitution. Could be if, for instance, some dog were to kill another dog that was a service dog. The other question I had, it wasn't clear to me, so it says here that we were developed in collaboration with the city of Springfield and Lynn County, other animal code changes. Do either of those entities have an ordinance like this about service dogs?
Not quite like this, but what Lynn County recently has adopted ADA language for service animals for the dog licensing, and so waives dog license fees for service animals. And so, we would be consistent with that.
And that's in here.
Right.
Yeah.
We're trying to get consistent with that, so we would want to define what a service animal is, as well as what a service animal is not. I'm not aware that Springfield has it. I'm also, I don't believe that Lynn County defines it in this way. Just a quick check, I don't want to put you on the spot, but Lynn County animal code doesn't do this kind of sanctions for service, attacks on service animals, does it at this time that you're aware of?
No.
No. So, I think we'd be, we're in the lead, I guess, on this.
Okay. Good. Good place to be.
Okay. Chris, you're next.
Thanks. To me, this is very straightforward, and I agree with George. It's something that is certainly well-needed, especially the notion that service dogs are a special category and do require some additional consideration. And from the service dog standpoint, I think it could be relatively easy to establish that a dog was a service dog, whether through documentation of the training or through observing them being with somebody who was impaired or disabled in some way. From the sanction side, from the attacker's side, if you will, I think it's important that people understand that there is a heightened obligation if you do attack a service dog just as there would be if you attacked a human or somebody like that. Because I think there is an additional obligation, and I wouldn't want someone to say, "Oh, well, if it's not a service dog, it's okay if my dog kills it." You don't want to go there. I don't think that's really what you want to be able to say. I don't think a vicious dog should be attacking anything or anybody. And so, I don't want to make a distinction between a service dog from the attacker's standpoint, that it shouldn't be attacking anything. But from the victim's standpoint, I'm really comfortable with the fact that this does provide additional penalty because a service dog could be thrown way off whack if it does even just get bit. I think that could be a serious trauma to a service dog. So, from that standpoint, I think what you've done here is really good, and I fully support it. And it'd be nice if we could think of some even greater sanctions, but incrementally, I think this is a good step in the right direction.
Pat, you're next.
Thanks. I have nothing to say about, different to what anybody else has said, it makes a lot of sense to me. It's just that I'm a little bit concerned and confused why all animals that attack aren't impounded, and why all owners who train animals to attack or intimidate aren't personally impounded also. I guess you're going to tell where I'm coming from on this one.
I like that.
All right. Do you want to put a motion out there?
Frank, you have it.
Okay. I'll put the motion out. Moved to schedule a public hearing on proposed animal code changes regarding service animals.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Okay, you want to speak?
Yep. I just don't see why it's different, why a dog, any dog that's attacked shouldn't be considered equally important. They're important in different ways. I know there is a man who I think used to be on the Human Rights Commission who had two dogs seriously attacked. They weren't service animals, but it was devastating financially and emotionally to him. And I don't, I just worry about making more laws. I think we have too many, as there are. We have enough to cover, I think we already have enough regulations. Looking through this material, I was reminded of a law that was passed in 96, which I think was really terrible, and it's still on the books. Once you pass them, they're forever. We never seem to repeal anything. But this is the one that says, it was on page 34 of the agenda, that dogs, no dog owner shall be, permit a dog to be on Alder Street, including the sidewalks thereof between and including the southern sidewalk of East 12th Avenue and the northern sidewalk of East 14th Avenue, nor on East 13th Street, including the sidewalks thereof.
Have you hung out on Alder Street?
And including the eastern sidewalk of Pearl Street and the eastern sidewalk of Kincaid Street. This is ridiculous, I think. This law was passed in 96, and we still have it. And it's, it was very controversial at the time, but once it's there, it's there forever. And there are bad, there are bad consequences sometimes, like, for example, there are professors who walk to their classes at night, who need to go on those streets and need, if it's late at night, not to classes, to, through their offices, late at night, a dog might be good protection, but they can't take them. And it's just, it's just an example that I found in here of something, you pass another law and you keep it forever.
Eli?
I don't want to speak to the philosophical argument, but the, if an ordinance like this was put forward for a public hearing, that provision that you just cited would also be part of the public hearing, and so it's possible people might comment on that, and the council could take another look at that provision. Thank you.
George.
Does anybody know why that was put in there?
Uh-huh. Yeah. These guys were on the council. I was. I was. You weren't. Somebody answer that? I just kind of. You're the institutional memory here.
Okay, I'm thinking that there were, a lot of people were kind of penhandling in the area, and there was a feeling, as I recall, that people were using their dogs to intimidate people into giving them the handout.
Thank you. That's all I had.
Well, we can all make comments about that, but.
The hand, biting the hand that feeds you.
Okay.
Couldn't resist.
Okay. All those in favor, please indicate. Eight in favor and none in opposition, it passes. We have a couple of minutes here, so if I didn't ask.
Thirty minutes.
Yes. Didn't ask any of you to prepare for items, but if you have some items you want to share, I will welcome them.
Oh.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay. I wanted to share that I went to Train Day where Kitty made a very good speech.
Oh.
And I was at, where else did I see you make a good speech the day before? It's all running together now.
It is.
Oh, the day after that, the Million Mile March. And I think that Kitty, if she ever stops being mayor, can probably make a living doing public speaking because she just, she speaks.
Is there an announcement here? Do you have?
Already makes a living doing public speeches.
She's not going to, she's not going to pay.
Living.
Not a living.
Let me think about that.
Is it net positive?
I wanted to mention the water problem on Friendly Street, which the residents say was caused by the street improvement project. And I think, I believe them, it was either caused or exacerbated, and the city is not doing anything to correct it. I don't think we can do, that we can take care of all injustices as a council, as a city, but if the city has caused or exacerbated something that causes problems for people, then I think we should correct it. And there are these three households on Friendly that are having big water problems, big financial problems because of the water problems, and I think we should do something about it. Thank you.
Pat?
Mayor Piercy, I would like to join lots and lots of, hundreds of other people in thanking Mayor Piercy for declaring last Saturday, May 7th, Ernie Unger Appreciation Day.
Thank you for taking it.
And Mayor Piercy worded it, or had worded a wonderful proclamation that was very well-received to a standing ovation, might I add. So, thank you very much, Mayor, and thank you each of the councillors for authorizing that to be done.
Thanks for bringing it up, Pat.
Yeah.
My pleasure indeed. Well deserved, too.
And I, I got there about, I think my timing was impeccable. I got there just as the service was ending and just as the reception was beginning.
Timing's everything. I handed out the baton.
But I did get to tell Ernie and Pat how much I appreciated their service for our community, and that was why, I knew you'd taken care of the formalities, but I really did want to say, um, thank you.
Not this Pat, Pat Unger, by the way.
George.
I don't know, I was looking through the agenda, and it doesn't say when Travel Lynn County is going to be the item from, for the meeting. So, I just want to throw out two real quick things about Travel Lynn County. Kiri Westlin at the Oregon Governor's Tourism Council had a convention here a couple of weeks ago, and she received top honors as a state, state's top tourism expert. So, she does a lot of good work for us, and she was duly recognized. The second thing is, is people probably don't know this, but the Gateway Adventure Center, which is the new Travel Lynn County hotspot, so to speak, is available for private functions.
I've been there the one, it was great.
They have, on Tuesday nights, they have wine tasting, but they also do private functions. They've had many conferences there and social group met there, and, you know, if you want to do a little private gathering, and if you work with the Travel Lynn County personnel, they'll be able to get, make all the arrangements for you. One other thing, on Thursday, May 19th, will be the Public Works Day at the City Yard on Roosevelt. That goes from nine to three, and then at 10 o'clock that same morning, which I'm going to try to make if I can get off work in time, is the Will Kenzie Crossing Groundbreaking, and that's the new affordable housing at the old Will Kenzie School Site that's been in the works since I've been on the council. So, it's going to be a push for me to get there. Hopefully, I can make it in time. And.
That's it?
I think that's it.
I just want to say we weren't able to do Public Works Day for, was it two years that we haven't been able to?
Two years, yeah.
So, it's great, because I know when I taught school, taking the kids to Public Works Day was a really big deal. So, it's a, it's a good day.
It's a lot of fun.
Yep.
Okay.
Anybody else? Andrea.
Yeah.
Oh, Mike, got you.
I guess the only thing I wanted to share, I've been going to a lot of meetings with El Rapa. More news to come when I have my opportunity to share. But I did attend, they had a grand opening and tours at the Seneca Biomass last Thursday, the 5th, and I didn't go on the tour because I was feeling a little dizzy. I didn't press my blood pressure, so, but it was well-attended. The ex-Governor Kit Sabra was there, and John Brown actually spoke. And it was, it was pretty, it was very well-attended. There was activists there, too, also outside protesting, so that led to a little bit of excitement. But other than that, it was my birthday last week, and so I've been just.
I've taken it easy.
Been feeling really good about it.
Yes. I'm double nickels.
That related to the fit. Busy.
Well, actually, I didn't connect the two. Thank you, Alan.
Mike.
Thank you, Mayor. George and I and Betty, it took all three of us apparently to fill in for the mayor on Mayor's Day at the Capitol a few weeks ago when we all went up with the city's government affairs person, Brenda Wilson, so that we could lobby on the city's priorities in this legislative session.
It was Adam.
And it was Adam. I don't mean to leave Adam out at all as well. Did a great job of walking us around to speak with our delegation and several other folks about our priorities for this particular session. And what staff had identified as our highest legislative priority was Senate Bill 764, the alcohol impact area opportunity, and that passed out of the Senate last week and moves to the House with the good possibility of being passed here soon. So, our top legislative priority is in good shape. I don't have a full Police Commission report to give tonight, but I do know that the mayor and I, in the last Police Commission meeting, were asked to kind of get a, an informal poll of the rest of you, as it were, for the manner in which we would like to see recommendations for new boards and commission members coming forward from the Police Commission. We were asked, would we prefer that we do as we typically do or that we have done in the past, that we do the direct interview and recommendations and then voting on new members? Or whether we would like members of the Police Commission to pre-screen or pre-interview any of the potential candidates? And so, I think.
I know that's been working on.
Yeah, and I mentioned that I, it was my preference personally that the council take care of that, as we always have, and that we don't need them to pre-screen the candidates. I think there, for me, some of them are re-upping, so you would have some of the other members kind of.
You need each other.
Yeah, and I thought that could be problematic, so. But if I could have any other comments or just head nods, that that's the way people would feel comfortable going.
Keep it as it is.
Keep it as it is.
To keep it with just council, go ahead and.
Think them out for us.
Okay. Thank you. I'll give them that recommendation.
Okay. Chris, you got anything?
No, I've been out of channel a lot, so.
You took a trip.
Two trips.
Two, two big trips. George?
If I may, Mayor, one thing I did forget, Wednesday night, there was a hearing out in Bethel on Bethel Community Center.
What time is it?
It starts, sort of a budget committee meeting.
So, yeah, but however, I talked to Emily Proudfoot today and she's going to provide
me personally with a briefing on what's going to be presented on Wednesday night, right before the council meeting on Wednesday, so if you'd like to sit in on that, it's going to be out at Roosevelt.
Okay.
At 10:30. Yeah, but we have a budget committee meeting during the Bethel Community Park meeting.
Eddie, did you have anything you wanted to, to argue?
I did, but I do have something else. National League of Cities Human Development Steering Committee, of which I am chair this year, is going, has chosen for one of our main items of study, social security, possible social security reform, and we will be, be making a recommendation to the entire National League. If you have ideas, yeah, give them to me.
Couple of things that I will tell you is that the Million Moms March that happened on Sunday was in honor of Officer Cole Cullen, so that was a nice acknowledgement and there was also an I march, which was, I think, ended up being about, it was earlier than that one, ended up in being about 400 kids from schools with their parents and all out asking people to pay attention to global warming and climate change. They did a great job. I saw Mike and his kids at Aubrey Park and I would just suggest that if you haven't been to Aubrey Park lately, you should go, it is a gem.
Really is.
It's just gorgeous.
I don't know, somebody...
Citizen volunteers have adopted the park, have diligently been taking out all the unnatural plants and replacing them with natural plants and the creek is beautiful and the, and the bridges and all of that. I just think from the road, you look at that and think it was just a little piece of, of open space and you have no idea all the beautiful things that are around the outside of it. So, I just suggest if you haven't been, people who are listening, you ought to go out and take a look, it's great.
May I add just a little to that, Mayor? I would just say that, and thank you for mentioning that, yeah, the kids and I went out there, I saw the mayor and her husband and their dog too as well out there and we, one of the things that is unique about Aubrey Park is it's kind of surrounded by Spring Creek as it comes around there. Now, Peter Thurston and Kelly Burke and several neighbors that are around that area have worked many, about two, three years now or more restoring Spring Creek to its more natural state for...
It's just beautiful.
A very long ways, more than just certainly around the park, as it flows through a great portion of Santa Clara. I mean, they've put in dozens and dozens and dozens of weekends on this and have been the recipient of now, I think, two neighborhood matching grants, perhaps three, to restore with, with native plants that have been replanted and invasive species taken out. And it's really become a real jewel in that area, so I agree with the mayor.
Both of our parks and volunteers.
Highly recommend, people should see that if they can.
Last week, we also had some visitors from El Salvador who came to Eugene and I met with them and they connected up with good company. They're really looking at Eugene for good green practices to take back to, to El Salvador and then possible some really good economic relationships and so that was a very promising meeting and a lot of mayors were there. I went up to Salem to their city club for, to speak on rail and, let's see, Rich Litten, you probably know, retired, and so they had a gathering for him and a bunch of briefings for what he's done in our community for economic development. And I guess I'll end this by saying, I said this to us before, to you guys before we started the meeting and sent out an email today, but for folks listening, I mean, I'm, I'm just thrilled that Secretary LaHood announced this morning that we get 1.5 million here in Eugene to work on, to do the engineering work and the NIPA work, which puts us in place for the total allocation for railroad spurges and cross, crossings so that, so that one train doesn't have to wait for another by our depot. So, it's what we've been working on for at least four years and going to our United Front trips and everywhere, looking for money to do this and, and we got it. So, that's, that's a terrific thing for rail and the new expression is, in Oregon, is rapid passenger rail. Because that's what we think we can get, so it's progress, it's great progress. Thank you, guys.
One more.
Oh, and I didn't ask the manager, did I ask?
No, I'm fine, thanks.
There is a meeting on April, or May 26th. It's co-sponsored by City of Eugene, the Sustainability Commission and the Oregon Global Warming Commission. It's called Roadmap 2020. It's about the state's plan to meet the greenhouse gas emissions targets for the state of Oregon and also we'll be talking about the local targets and how we meet those through our transportation and land use and other, and it's Thursday, May 26th, from 6 to 9 at the Hilton.
Great. Okay, we got, thank you, see you in a little while.
Go vote.